Okay, I'm gonna call to order the. September twenty eighth Norton Select Board Meeting. Um, in attendance are Denise Luciano, Alec Rich the third, Steve Hornsby, myself. Meg Arts is um on the road and they're going to attempt to join us uh any minute. Very Mike? Yep, okay. Um, so um. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the. To the. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And then we're gonna go through that, alright. So I declare under General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, paragraphs eight, three, and section twenty one, paragraph A one. That the purposes of the executive session tonight will be um to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And forestry rubber manufacturing, energy, Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union AFL-CIO. CLC Local Union ninety-five seventeen, unit fifteen, formerly known as Sina A. And the Norton Police Superior's Officers Association. Are we going to do number two? Okay, and to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual. Because a discussion in open session could compromise the purposes of the executive session. And with the board to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
I move that the board go into executive session under GL uh chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three, and twenty-one, A one. For the purposes and reasons declared by the chair and with the board to return to open session thereafter.
Second.
Okay, um roll call vote, uh Denise? Alex?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Um, okay, we are exiting to executive second.
To return.
Okay, so. We have about thirty seconds until seven fifteen, and then we're gonna open the uh the public hearing.
Over to the resignation.
Mine as well, right? Mike?
Yes.
We have a resignation Vera Jordan. Okay, from the alternate member position on the Council of Agents. We have to vote to accept our resignation, resignation? No, okay. Okay, alright, we got that done, now it's seven fifteen. Alright, uh seven fifteen, um we uh we need to uh open the public hearing. Uh on the application of Alberto's Pizza and Pub Incorporated. Um, and um I think I need to take a motion from one of the board members to uh open the public hearing.
I'll take a motion to open the public hearing, the application of Alberto's Pizza and Pub. And for affection, well, on purpose is. License, veteran's license at two forty-one Mansfield Avenue. From Alberto's.
Second.
Alright, so Denise motion, Steve seconded, um I think we have to do a roll call, Denise? Voting on the open the public. Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I am also a yes, Meg?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we are uh now in the public session, um so we are considering the uh the application as Denise read. Um, do we have anybody here from uh Alberto's? Alright, come on up, please, get standard podium.
Good time. Long walk when you have a bad back. Good evening, I'm attorney Henry Sousa, in office as well, this town street. And I am here tonight uh on behalf of uh Carlos Ortiz and Lorena Ruiz. To ask you to transfer a liquor license and all the associated uh other licenses that currently held by Alberto's. Uh to them, uh they have agreed to purchase the restaurant. And we've uh I'm sure you have it in your pocket, they can see that they've negotiated a new lease. And uh some of you may remember when I came here after the original proprietor's and the property passed away. I came on behalf of uh his sisters Pat and Sheila and asked that you transfer a liquor license to them. They have uh they have guided the ship through the storms that we call the pandemic and uh. They now feel that it's time to pass the reins on to uh. Other folks that have lots of energy and want to keep the business going. I would point out that one of your applicants tonight, Lorena, has worked there for fourteen years. She's been line cook for fourteen years, Carlos uh has not worked there, but he has been, believe it or not. In the restaurant business for about thirty years, he's worked at the Lafayette House and he works now with Baker's Quanit. He certainly has some experience as well. It, everybody here, I'm pretty sure is familiar with Alberto's, that has become a mainstay in our community. And we don't want it to change all that much, you might notice we didn't change the name of the new corporation or that. We just kind of reversed the pizza and the pub, and want to keep things going, they never done this morning, I said. What are we gonna talk about, changes to the menu? No. Changes to hours of operation? No. Gonna make any alterations? No, we just want to keep things going the way they are. And uh I think that you would find that, and again, like those are in your package if I remember correctly. You know, they have the serve safe certification, the allergen awareness, the TIP certification, everything that you need. To stay on top of things. And so what can we tell you about the transfer other than?
Um, does the board have any questions?
One, just kind of formality, when we when we do vote, I noticed that police fire and buildings that dirt have not signed off on yet. And then we make the vote continue on those.
Okay, yeah, good catch, we can do that. Alright, anything else, any other questions? That sounds pretty straightforward to me. Maybe they broke, don't fix it. That's what it sounds like.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Just buy it.
Yeah.
Just say that, but it just sounded too easy.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion? Sorry, I'm sorry, is there anybody else, thank you, is there anybody else from the uh from the public here who would like to speak on on this uh application? No, alright. And anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, I'm voting, we're gonna close the public hearing first, yeah, so I'll I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, alright, uh closing the public hearing, motion in a second, hearing, a motion in a second, Denise, do we close it? Yes, yes, Alec, yes, Steve?
Yes.
Steve, yes, Meg?
Yeah.
Kevin, uh Kevin is a yes as well, um the uh we're closing the uh public session, okay, now. We can take a moment.
I didn't want to read it.
Manager Roberto Carlos Ortiz Moreno, a transfer of affection twelve on purpose in common, particular all license. I'm not making sense, not right, alcohol, alcohol, beverage license at two forty-one Mansfield Avenue, North map. From Alberto's Pub and Pizza Inc., in business as Alberto's Pub and Pizza. Manager Sheila.
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second, we have to do roll call again, Denise?
Yeah.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I also am a yes, so the uh application is approved by select board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney Sousa, yes, yep.
There are other licenses there as well, request was to transfer those two?
Uh, yes, is that we get. So we have um uh we have number.
Number two under licenses, no, I'm sorry, three.
Number three under licenses, okay, so um. Right, so this is for the jukebox, is that right? So jukebox? Yeah, hat box. Okay, so um does somebody want to make a motion for uh for item number three? Steve?
Yes. I will motion to approve the application for the transfer of common uh particular light, automatic, particular automatic amusement and Sunday entertainment licenses from Alberto's. Pub and Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Alberto's Pub and Pizza. Manager Sheila McPherson to Alberto's Pizza and Pub Incorporated, manager Roberto Carlos Ortiz Moreno, to be utilized at two forty-one Mansfield Avenue in Norton. Zero two seven six six.
Okay. Just for clarification, that was common Vic and entertained, yes, okay, common Vic, automatic amusement. Okay, hearing a motion, did we have a second? Alec seconds, okay, uh we have to roll calls, uh Denise? Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I too am a yes, so that's a unanimous yes?
Thank you again.
Alright.
Appreciate it, final question?
Yes.
With regards to the sign offs from uh. By the department, go to help, yeah, got it, is that something my clients should request individually of those? Let me in the office to send them up to inspect it.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have a folder in the select board's office and all the inspectors will come in and grab it.
Okay, alright, awesome, thank you very much. And I know I was gonna do that.
Thank you, and good luck to you. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Well, I'll see you soon.
See you tonight. You might need. Alright, so um we're jumping around a little bit, so we're gonna go back to um appointments, resignations, and retirements. Um, we are on item number two, which is the appointment of Laura, uh Lori Dombrowski, uh to the alternate member position on the Council of Agents.
She, I don't think she didn't make it today.
She didn't make it, okay, um. Does anybody have any questions or any concerns? I do not.
Now I was at work in front of the point of.
Take a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Laurie Dombrowski to the alternate member position on the Council of Agents. Second.
Okay, Alec motion, Steve seconded, um. Denise?
Yeah.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I too am a yes, so uh congratulations to Lori Dombrowski. As a new alternate member on the Council of Agents. Uh, number three under appointments uh is the appointment of David Kulikowski as a part-time local inspector. Is David here? Come on up, David. And stand there, um and um. Uh, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're going, why you want to be a local inspector.
So again, my name is David Kulikowski, congratulations, I'm pronouncing the name correctly. Uh, I come to you guys as a currently appointed, traditionally appointed uh local building inspector for the town of Brooklyn. My urgent community, I do work there, I will be working here part-time. So it could be two, maybe three days a week as needed. I've been an inspector for a year. My background's heavy in construction, uh in construction management, started as a campus and competitors union. Completing that and becoming a attorney in twenty ten, as well as achieving my associate's bachelor's and then my master's degree in science, construction management. My career path right now is me as a small business entrepreneur, but staying within the construction alone. Inspector.
Right.
So excited to come in and uh join a community and learn the ins and outs of um what's and what you guys have going here for the.
Alright. Thank you, appreciate it, Nick, did you want to say anything or?
Uh, I'm just, we're, we're excited, um. We're excited to add him to the department, um I've been by myself for a while now, so. There's a lot going on in town, as I'm sure most people know, uh so I think he's gonna be a huge asset to the department and um. And we're excited, looking forward to it, I think it'd be a good fit.
Okay, so, alright, does anybody have any questions for uh for the other for Nick? I think I'm good, alright.
So I'm making a motion to appoint David Kulikowski as part-time local inspector.
Okay, Alec made a motion, Denise seconded, um roll call vote, Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I too am a yes, welcome David, good luck. Congratulations, Nick.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it, well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys very much. Alright, um. I wanna, I don't wanna hold. I don't think we're gonna hold up anybody, do we want to have anybody else we want to call up just so they don't have to sit around?
Yeah.
Uh Roger, see you do Roger, okay, alright, is Roger Marks in here? Come on up Roger, we're gonna skip to you so you don't have to sit around the whole meeting, unless you want to sit around for the whole meeting. Um, but uh. Um, so Roger is here to present uh the Deposits Peterson Food Drive um scheduled for Sunday, October twenty-second. Um, and discuss veterans participation in the upcoming, oh, bring it, so.
Okay, so I've got a flyer.
Yeah, sir.
Thank you, sir. Have an idea, but.
So appreciate it.
Thanks. So thank you for taking the time for me tonight, um here tonight to talk about the Deposits Peterson Memorial Food Drive. It's a food drive that we've been doing for the last four years, it's turned into the the Deposits Peterson Memorial Food Drive, after we lost those two officers in twenty twenty-one. Um, I think it's important, their names are. That that uh we don't forget all the work that they've done here in this town, that's what I. See their names on the drive. Uh, just to give you a um little bit of background on the cupboard of kindness role of food goes. So cupboard of kindness uh distributes somewhere upwards of twenty-five hundred pounds of food a month. To uh somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred individuals in town. And last year, our goal was two thousand pounds of food for this food drive, and we came up just a little bit short, we just a little bit made that, but our goal this year is four thousand. So we're out promoting it everywhere we can, trying to get people involved, um. There are several ways that people can get involved in it, and just to make sure we're clear, if it's on October twenty-first, Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten to one, is to drop off. Uh, the ways that people can get involved is if they want to, just drop off food. At that time, it's just a drive-through process, right, at the cupboard of kindness underneath the uh town hall. Uh, the police department is involved, where they'll have officers there to take the food right out of your car, people don't have to get out of their cars. And then we have volunteer groups, we have uh high school athlete, athletic groups. All the volunteers who work at the cupboard of kindness, who do an amazing job there, who have to sort the food, check all the dates, we have to check the dates on every piece of food that comes in to make sure that it's not out of date, because they can't. Distribute any, it's a date, and take it in. Uh, so that's one way, another way is this flyer that I put out in front of you here, um we're recruiting neighborhood volunteers to come and. Collect food for the neighborhood, so what they do is, well, we're gonna distribute these flyers in a bag, I actually have about. Fifteen hundred old broken bags. Then we put them in, and the people just go and put them on their bell box the week before. People on that Saturday, by ten o'clock, they put the food back up on their bell box, and it's collecting it, and then drop off. If people can put their bags out, but they can't collect them, the police department is. Gonna be going around with their pickup truck to pick up food anyplace in town where people aren't able to pick up food, so if you have food that you want to help out with. There's a way to do it that way. Uh, we're also trying to encourage local businesses to have a collection bin in their store, if they can, not for the whole year, just for the three weeks in October. Now, so if you know of any local business that would be interested in doing that, they can contact me, my name is on this flyer. Um, it's gonna be posted all over Facebook, any place we can, if we can get it on anybody's website, we will as well, so. That's some food to have it brought in on the twenty-first, we will do with that. We're also gonna have, it's gonna be after the twenty-first, but at the uh town town meeting at the high school, we're gonna have a selection bin there, so if anybody wants to put man some food at the town meeting, they can drop it off there as well, and support it with a town. Also, that's above all, I have the legs, food drive, any questions about food drive, or however it's.
It's one small bunch, here you print these to put in the mailbox list. I have it because if you could add a note on here of expiration dates, I will say, if you want in the food pantry, it's amazing, people take all their spire stuff and come back and.
We did do that, and I thought about that as well, but you have to check every can anyway.
Yeah.
So.
It's just, it ends up getting wasted, right?
Yes. Some people call it wasted, so I mean, they have, they, what they do is uh, it's just in a couple of months, actually, they can put it outside where it's not on their shelves, where people can come and take that.
I think six months is the longest.
Yeah, yeah, but we are, we actually, we have a uh, we have a lot of kids that check the dates and play a little game of them, give a prize to the person who finds the most out of the. Oh, that would be fun, I can from nineteen ninety-four last year. Wow, wow, so, yeah, um. That's not, uh, I can add that on there, that's.
And if you, and if you're, if you add it on while you're at it, the word shit gets so long like that.
Uh, we, uh, I'm assuming this will get put up on like the electronic sign, and it might already be on there, I think, I think I might have seen it, so, okay.
Yeah.
And the police department has been a huge help with us on this, they have uh police officers who, and even when they're off duty, they come in and volunteer their time to help pull up the food as well, and go around and pick it up, so.
Great, um, and I, what I'd like to do too is um, we have um, I don't know how many people watch select board meetings, but um.
Four.
But we'll do, we'll do another announcement for this next week, and then I want to do it again on the nineteenth, it becomes just a couple of days before, so we'll just, we'll try to get as much attention for it.
That'd be great.
As possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I appreciate that a lot.
I had posts on the social media, you just said they were on the social media, right?
I think so, yeah.
Well, it's gonna be on all the Norton uh Facebook pages.
Okay. Well, I'll try to bump the word right again.
Yeah, I'll repost it with my hundred followers or something. Yeah, I guess.
If every one of them brings in a can of food, that'd be.
Absolutely. Yeah, alright.
Uh, the old, the other thing I'd like to talk about, if you have a minute, is a couple of things, uh a member of the uh Veterans Council here in town. And we're having the annual Veterans Day Parade that we always have, and trying to reach out to veterans who we don't normally see, who would like to participate in the parade, but either for one reason or another, they can't get to it, or don't know about it. Trying to spread the word about the parade, if they want to take part in the parade and they're not able to march, we have a float that they could ride in. Um, and take part that way, we'll provide transportation to the front parade if they need it. So if um, again, if anybody, they can contact the uh Veterans Agent through them, or the VFW, or myself. And uh we can get them, we're also gonna have this year, uh we're putting that float, and we're reaching out to families of veterans and veterans in the child, the Halloween period, so we're gonna. Be uh promoting veterans that way too.
That's awesome. Great.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yep.
For everything. Alright. Okay, um, let's approve the minutes real quick, real fast, and then we'll do what we want to the next license that we have to look at, so. Um, anybody want to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes first, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, Steve with a motion. Uh, Alec with the second, um Denise? Alec? Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I too am a yes, the minutes are approved. Um, and then next up on licenses and permits, um we have um, uh is Mark Hasselbarth here from, from Wheaton, come on up, Mark. Um, and um, uh, we have a um. Item on here regarding a one-day beer and wine license uh for a private event. Uh, on October thirteenth, so you can just give us a little background on what the event is, please?
Yep, so Friday the thirteenth, um we have a trustee there, so we've got sixty guests from five to nine in the science center, just a plate of meal with a beer and wine bar. It's a very low key.
Great, did you say how many?
About sixty.
About sixty, okay, right, um, does anybody have any questions for uh for Mark? No? Okay. Let's do it.
Make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license to Mark Hasselbarth. On behalf of Wheaton College for private event, Wheaton College in the Diana Davis Spencer Cafe. Of the Mars Center for Science and Technology Friday, October thirteenth, second.
Okay. Alright. Denise? Denise, yes, Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
And I too am a yes. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, you got another one? Ah, alright. Alright, go ahead, so um this is for private event uh on Saturday, October twenty-first.
Yes, this is a combination of like all best homecoming, parents' weekends, uh we do it every year, but I don't think it falls on parents' weekends, um. So it's a kind of like a tailgate with like food trucks, and then there's a beer garden fenced off uh with details uh, and we sell beer right there.
Yep.
I think last year we had the same count, this year expecting, I think, ignore the total counts like three to four hundred, but in the beer garden, there's only like, I think, sixty at a time. Um, I think last year for sale, I want to say roughly like six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Had three dollar beers and four dollar wine, so it's not really that crazy of a great event.
Alright, I remember.
Um, the campus police chief had reached out to Lieutenant Edwin for details as well, so I did check that today.
Excellent. Um, any questions from the board? I remember this event from last year because I wanted an invitation.
Oh, yeah.
Bounce houses, really.
That's what, that's what we heard last, when it was coming, yeah, for the bouncing.
That's what we heard last year, when you get the invites.
Please come on down. Sausages, chicken, so.
Uh, motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license to Mark Hasselbarth, uh on behalf of Wheaton College for a private event at Wheaton College. Parking lot three from twelve PM to four PM on Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, Denise?
Yeah.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Now you're free to call.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Everyone on the twenty-first.
Alright, thanks, Mark. Alright. We make sure we covered everything. Announcements, alright. So, alright, so we're down to um, we're on new business, um. Uh, number three, we're not going to take up, that was the email we received earlier today, that's what that was in regard to, okay, um, and um, number. Sorry. Did I skip over announcements?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, let's, sorry, let's go back to announcements, um, uh who's, who is the announcer?
Alex. So, uh, this is Norton Recreation Department is in Norton, kayak company are sponsoring the Sunset Kayak, I don't think. This is a guy in toward the Norton Reservoir by kayak, Norton Kayak. Um, they provide all the equipment, including PFDs, paddles, and dry bag for gear paddling, and see. Safety instruction from ACA shipwide instructor, Sunday, October first, from four thirty to six thirty. Uh, it's forty dollars per person, and all proceeds benefit the Norton Racing Department.
This Sunday.
This Sunday, yeah.
It is, oh wow, geez.
Alright. Cool, do we have any other announcements besides uh besides that? I didn't see any in the past. Yeah, Mr. Marks, okay, alright. Alright, so, um, alright, now we can move ahead to uh to new business, and um, we are up to, I. Probably want to give everybody a little background on uh these agenda items and what I was trying to do um with these, because Mike was confused, um, but um. Uh, basically what I wanted to do was um, uh we had had uh had some discussions at previous meetings regarding the uh the host community agreement negotiations with lucky green ladies. And so what I wanted to do was um, just get us just talking, communicating, um, uh, there, there's, there's been some, and I'm, I'm part of this, there's been some um. Uh, some communication that could have been better, so I just thought it would be good to get us all on the same page going forward, and how we're going to um, how the select board can potentially um. Assist with the uh with the negotiations, or not, whatever we decide, whatever we decide that we want to do. Um, and so I tried to, I wanted to keep things kind of moving along, and that's why we put things, I put things kind of in these different sections, to just try to keep us talking about um, you know. Uh, what we might want to do, what we might want to do, and just kind of keep it organized, so um. Uh, so, um, the first thing I wanted to do was, um, I just wanted to get the latest update um from town manager. Um, and from the select boards designate Renee Deli, um, just to get the uh the latest status update report on the negotiations, so start there, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'll stop and then Renee can, um, so Friday, um, last Friday, the Cannabis Control Commission. I'll stop and then Renee can, um so Friday, um last Friday, the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh had a meeting and approved um a lot of the i- issues that we had talked about before that they were looking at. Um and after that, this week, we, we got together um to review the M O A. And um I think we uh had some good progress and we'll be sending the review off to. Uh Lucky Green Ladies for them to look at. Get back to us.
What kind of clarification, Mike, is where I understood it was that there were some changes that were made in the original draft. Legislation to what they're gonna be currently drafting for November, so you don't know what those changes are yet, right?
We don't know what the final is gonna be in the revenue.
That clarification.
Yeah, so the um to my point, um I don't want to put a timeline on it because what we're doing, we're waiting for some comments back from town council. Um but we talked, the the documents will be ready to go as soon as we post up these final items, so. Um we hope that it will be soon, I haven't received an update yet. So uh you know, we'll reach back out next week if we don't hear anything or an update, but um you know, we should have a response to them momentarily.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any questions? Or Renee or Mike? Okay. Um, okay, so um thank you both very much, um yeah, um and um. Uh so, a couple of things that I I wanted to talk about next were maybe just some things that we could do um to uh to stay a little bit more um. Uh up to date on what's going on with the with the negotiations, um you know, keeping in mind, you know, our role and what our role should be. Um and so one of the things I thought would be kind of a simple thing for us to do is just all agree as a board. That um until these contracts are finalized, we're just gonna have a a standing agenda item. So that at every meeting, we are getting some type, whether it's from Mike or Renee or both, um some kind of update regarding the uh the negotiations. I just think it's a simple thing we could do, it makes sure that it stays on on our radar, it doesn't drop off. And it might be a one minute update, but at least we're getting kind of regular updates and it's something we know we're gonna get at every meeting. Um so, um so that's the only logic behind that, I just thought it was a simple thing that we could do, um you know, to uh. You know, to uh increase our knowledge of what's going on, so. So um so uh if anybody wants to make a motion, I'll take it for that, or if you wanna discuss it.
Make a motion to add a standing agenda item. For H C A negotiation updates, our regular agenda.
Okay.
Do we need to articulate it as needed or as?
Um I think if it's not, if it's not. Yeah, we just won't take it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
So do we need a motion for that, or can we just have you add it on?
Um. I just wanted to make it more formalized, so that's all, yeah. Okay, alright, um. Um, roll call vote, Denise?
Yeah.
Alright, Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Okay, and I too am a yes. Um and then um the next item uh is, is um. It's kind of um tied into the uh to the, I think the next two items are kind of similar, next three items.
Yeah.
Um but we're really talking about um what our role should be with regards to the negotiations going forward. Um and um. Uh I'm just gonna open this up to conversation for for you guys to kind of express what you, what you would like, what you think we can do. What you think we can't do, um and then we're just trying to land somewhere um where we're all comfortable uh moving forward, so. So Denise, go ahead.
I I would say that I think. We want to keep it on the link where it is. Um. Because I. Don't think we want to make this a thing, if it's a thing to a H C A, then we should do it for all of them, right? Doesn't make sense to just. Create a committee. Um for one agreement, you do, I'm gonna do it for all of them. Um and I also think um in my experience with negotiations that. Less is more, less fewer people, the easier negotiation, the more we can get into the pot. The 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 more complex those discussions go. Um and harder to get alignment amongst the parties, we've got fifteen people in the room versus four.
I I I definitely agree that um a committee is probably set too far. I think it could be a little too much. Um. Don't necessarily agree with the, you know, too many, too many people in the in the mix is gonna agree. I don't know, make it, make it longer, I I right now, especially for this one, it's it's taken quite a while, um. And I initially, I'm not sure how I worded it, but I initially requested to be um to be appointed uh the select board liaison in addition to Renee. It it was for all H Cs, not just for this one, so.
Okay. Alec?
I do think, and write up the email that we got from council. I think um you know, it is best. With their. Rough recommendation, but I don't see a problem with. One of. Select board members. Being part of that as well, at minimum. To inform the rest of us. Details of what's going on, so we're up to speed on what's going on.
I will say, I think, I understand the, I understand the point, but I think. We have already selected people to be negotiating on our behalf. And I have no reason to say that they're not negotiating on the town best, the town best interest, so. I don't, I don't see how adding someone else means the next is going to. Help the, help the concerns. Uh I think it'll just come, add complexity unneeded.
I I I do think, I mean, we do have an appointed, and and maybe I wasn't clear, I I mean, I don't think. Um putting myself on there as as a liaison, hopefully um. Has anything to say about Renee's position, how she's negotiated so far, I I don't think anybody should take it that way, I think, uh just having. Somebody from the select board on there as well, in addition, I think will help. So I I I mean, I'll nominate myself to be uh one of the liaisons, I I we can have at least two, I believe.
So so I ask, what is, what is the liaison's role? You know, you know, Mike?
To assist in the go- negotiations.
That's not a liaison, it's negotiator, right? Right, so.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure we're clear, right, on like, what, what are we talking about here, so um. Like, I think of a liaison as like, like, you know, we have a liaison to the uh to the E D C, right? Who goes to meetings, you know, doesn't, isn't a part of the committee, but goes to meetings and then reports back, like you are with the uh P B C. Right, so same, same kind of thing, right, so um but. You know, I think that's important for us to kind of make clear, like, is, are we sending someone to be a negotiator? Or are we sending someone to just be observing and reporting back to the board on, on what's happening? So I just want to make.
So I'll clarify then, you know, I'll nominate myself to be an additional negotiator.
Okay, so that, right, okay, so that's, that's, that's a good clarification.
I I also just wanted to clarify too that throughout the process, both Mike and Renee have always been approachable. If you want to ask a question, right? There, there's, there's. There's no reason why we haven't been, I've reached out a couple of times to find out what's going on, we can all reach out, say what's the status of what's going on. Um then you can't ask those questions going forward, but now we've been in regular agenda item. I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need to have an additional. Feedback.
Okay.
Every, every two weeks gonna have an update in what's status.
Alright, I don't wanna, I don't want to forget that Meg is on the phone.
Yeah.
Um so um uh Meg, did you have any comments or opinions on this?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I just, I, 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 the whole thing baffles me, only because the whole purpose. You know, the, the negotiator does the negotiation, but we're the ultimate approver, so I feel like we're just adding another layer, but. Um you know, and again, like, like everyone's been saying, fuck, what is every right to go to, whatever you want to go to, and I just. I I I don't see the need for, I, I, I just, I think we're overkill.
Okay, so I think, and I would say, I think before we vote specifically for Steve, the negotiator, we should vote, do we want to even have a negotiator based on councils?
Yes, yeah, so that's where, that's kind of where I wanna, I wanna go with this, um I did have a question for um. Uh for Mike, which is um. So I, cause I was a little confused by this, but it's, select board members can attend, can attend as observers? To meetings, is that, that's like, like I've been, I sat in on a, on a meeting, actually, I think most, few of us have sat in on a meeting. Um so what's kind of, how, how does that so work?
And people always get hung up on posting of the open meeting law, so if um. The planning board was having something that you were interested in, as long as you're not deliberating. You, you can all go to a meeting.
Right.
You can't sit and deliberate, but if you're all at, at some meeting, if you all go to a school committee meeting or whatever. Um you don't have to post as long as you're not delivering at that meeting.
Okay, so, so the purpose from, if, if I'm gonna be an observer, right, the purpose to observe is like, take back to this bloodboard. This is status, but we're getting that every two weeks.
Yeah, I see your line.
Yeah, that's why I say I don't think service is going to get us anywhere.
Right, right.
But. Um I would just say, so what I was just, the scenarios I was just giving you, they're open meetings, so you're at an open meeting. But when it comes to. Say, these negotiations, and you probably know this, but I'm just, when it comes to these negotiations that are really behind closed doors. Then you can't have more than two of your members there, cause you really would then have to.
Right.
Have a quarrel.
Right, okay. Um. Okay, any, any, yeah, go ahead, Alex.
So with the, with the uh. Email. From town council, it was specific to. Um the town manager and town council being the leads on it.
Right.
And I don't. Uh you know, obviously, there's a reason for it.
Um and I think what the reason is, sorry for interrupting you, is that um for something like that, it could be considered a subcommittee. And then you would have to post. The meeting forty eight hours in advance and have an agenda, because it's really then a subcommittee meeting of the select board.
Right, so and I think the, the, you know, the perception is, you know, everybody wants to try and help facilitate. Yeah, there's a lot of facts involved with this.
Yep.
That uh you know, the goalpost has been changed multiple times for multiple reasons. And it's gonna be a mistake. Changing, you know, the goalposts.
Right.
Multiple times.
Yeah.
Um so, it it to the benefit of the applicant. Um so. I think. Probably there's been a little bit of a, a communication. More of a communication issue and. You know, we all want to kind of facilitate help.
Right.
You know, it, there's, there's no other intention other than trying to get to the finish line.
Right.
And trying to help in any fashion.
Right, right.
So um I think that's the, the whole.
Yeah.
Impetus behind it.
I think one of my, yeah, and I think um I think one of my concerns is that. Um and why I wanted to to talk about this in this very specific way tonight is. When, when we are all kind of off going off in our own directions and we're having conversations outside. Of the negotiations, that only hurts the negotiations.
Yeah.
Cause it creates confusion and it creates um and and we don't, you know, we, we can't, we can't be making promises on behalf of the board as individuals. Right, that's not something we can do, um and so it gets very, it gets very messy and complicated, it it gets extremely. When there are conversations going on outside of the, of the negotiations, um and so. Um so one of my concerns is, so what I want to do is try to, is try to put a box around it. So that we're not having conversations that we shouldn't be having um outside of the negotiation process. Okay, um and I think that's, I, I, it's just extremely important to me. Personally, that, that everybody kind of knows that when you're discussing something outside of negotiations. You're not helping the process, okay, um and so um and so what I wanted to do tonight, and I'm, and I'm, and I was. You know, I might be hearing this wrong from everybody, but what it sounds like is, you know, we would like to to have, you know, we would like to be. More knowledgeable about what's going on, um um. But I am, I have similar concerns to Denise and to Meg about, you know, adding another official negotiator to the, to the process. I just think that could. Um you know, as Mike said, I feel like there's been some progress made recently, and I kind of. I'm a little uncomfortable maybe upsetting, upsetting that at this point, so that's just where I am right now. And and then, and then there's the subcommittee concern as well, so, so I guess what I wanted to 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 ask Mike and Renee was. Um you know, was, was, is, is there a way for us to um. You know, to, to, to attend to meetings or attend to, you know, attend discussions with town council or with the, with the applicant. Um you know, in a way that we can observe, but we have to be very clear that we're not, if, if that were the way we went ahead. That we're not negotiating, that we're not um you know, other, other than just being there so that we're more up to speed ourselves as individuals almost.
And I would even clarify that if someone is. Even approached to ask, and the right response should be is go see Mike, Renee, whoever.
Right, and and to Alex's point, I think. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to ascribe anything other than the motives of people that they're trying to help. Right, so I get it, I get it that people are trying to help, and we all want this to get across the finish line, and we all want. We all want Lucky Green Ladies to be successful and be here for a long, long time and and run a great business. Um so, so I think, you know, we have to kind of resist that urge to jump in and help. Or we are talking about it as a board, or we are, you know, discussing it together before we're, you know, anybody is responding to anything. Outside of the negotiations, cause I just think it creates a lot of confusion, so um anyway, go ahead.
So no, my request was not specific to the Lucky Green, Green Ladies, it was to H Cs in general, so.
Yeah, okay.
I nominated myself, so if there's a second.
Yep.
So yeah, we have to vote, first, we want to create this. Goal. And then if we do, then we'll vote.
Well, it doesn't.
Right, right, so I think the first thing we could, so let's follow the agenda, probably the best way to do this, so um. So we're on um discussion and our vote on select board members um observing negotiations. So can I ask you two guys to just clarify something for us, so. Is it, is it simple to just invite? You know, to let us know when meetings are occurring, so that, that we have to communicate with each other, so that we're all not showing up at a meeting altogether. Uh but is there, you know, is there a way that we could, you know, just make that a little bit more formalized? Um notifying that the board that there's meetings occurring?
So. Um we, I, I, we can notify you when this meeting's. Um any information we have, we can share with you as long as you don't respond back as a group. Um as far as um observing. Um I guess you'll have to figure out how you're gonna regulate that, so. There's not more than two members observing.
Right.
The negotiations.
So my question on that was, you know, several weeks ago, I requested to be notified of meetings and be involved in any communications regarding this, and I, and I wasn't. I mean, there's a meeting the other day that I wasn't even noted, I didn't know about till after it happened.
Right, right.
So at that point, there was already two select board members that were invited to it, I'm not sure who invited them.
Yeah.
Um but. At, at that point, we, we could have discussed it and said, okay, I'm gonna go, or you're gonna go, or whatever, so.
Yeah.
I, I think that is a, is a major drop in communication. You know, I, whoever, whoever dropped it, I'm not gonna blame anybody.
Right, I, I just don't, I, Renee can speak for herself, but I don't want to get caught as. Letting. Yeah, I'd rather just let the chairman know.
Yeah, that's.
That there's gonna be a meeting, I'll let you all know, but then somehow you gotta go through the chairman and get back to us on who's gonna attend, I don't want to be making.
Yeah, we're, we're all adults, we all know the open meeting law, we know we can't have three of us. We, we, we can figure that out on our own.
I'm totally happy to be.
Know what's gonna happen.
Totally happy to be the, the coordinator of the board, I mean, that's, that's, that's no problem. Um and um. You know, we can, we can, we can figure it out, I think, amongst ourselves, you know, um. You know, maybe we put a rotation in place or whatever, something like that, I'm sure we can figure something out that would work, um so that everybody feels like they're included. Um and just to Steve's point, you know. You know, there was a meeting that I was, that, I, cause I had asked for the same thing to be included, and there was a meeting that occurred. That I wasn't involved in, and I didn't find out about until the next day too, so the whole idea of this is to try to avoid that from happening going forward, so.
If, if I mean, I mean, to, to your point, that, that did happen, and I wasn't aware that you weren't um knowing about that meeting there, but. Having that had happened to you a month prior. You know, maybe I should have been notified because you knew that that was an issue, so I'm just, I, you know.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming Mike, I'm just saying that, that the communication's uh lacking to some release.
And that's kind of what I want to.
Yeah.
Nail down tonight.
Move them forward.
Yeah.
Just at, at, at higher level of communication, I think.
Yeah, much higher. Absolutely.
Much, much, by the way.
Yep.
That's, that's all, I think that will facilitate.
Okay.
Matters.
Okay. Um. So. Alright, so um. Renee, did you have anything you wanted to add, I know you.
I just had a question, the one that goes out to Mike and Amy for availability, so, so what we'll do is. I just had a question, the one that goes out to Mike and Amy for availability, so, so what we'll do is, we'll get our availability. I'll send you a note and let you know when the meeting is, and you'll send me back whatever wants to observe, and then I'll.
Yeah, yeah, and and if, and if you guys are, if the board is okay with this, I don't, I don't think we should. I don't think you should be scheduling their meetings on our availability.
No, oh, no.
Right, that's gonna slow things down, because we're all busy, so just set your meetings, let us know, and then if we can, if, and then we'll figure out. Okay, alright, cool, um, so. So, um, so back to Steve's request. To be added as a, as a, um, as a negotiator, so, um. I don't think that's necessary, um, if we try this and see how it goes, um, but Steve, if you, if you wanna.
Yeah, I absolutely do, and and again, I just wanna reiterate that it's, it has nothing derogatory against Mike or Renee. Um, at all whatsoever.
Okay.
Well, you, are we personally about undoing what to have?
Yes.
We don't need to vote, I mean, that's. We're the governing authority on that, we don't need to vote to have a negotiator, an additional negotiator.
Oh, um, that's fine, yeah, and I.
We don't need to vote for that, for that option, I mean, that we can.
Okay, alright, okay, so, um. Uh, so, we have a motion from Steve. To add Steve as an additional negotiator. Um, on the.
HCA negotiations.
For HCA negotiations, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, alright, so any other discussion? I can't, I can't believe I keep forgetting Meg's there, Meg, do you have any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, alright, so we'll do a roll call vote, okay, Denise?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no based on council's opinion, and also if we're gonna have a negotiator, I think you should select the best negotiator.
Okay, alright, Alec.
Yes.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
I'm too gonna say no, just based on, I just want some civility and some organization, I think. Let's start with the process that we just, um. You know, put forward, and then let's see if there's still an issue, then then we can revisit, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I'm gonna help.
Okay, um, I'm also gonna be a no, and I, I, I appreciate Steve's willingness to do it. Um, um, I just, at this time, I think, um, let's see how it goes with with the new process. Um, and, you know, let's see if we can get some, you know, get some. Some momentum going, you know, I think we have a little bit of momentum going already, so I'd like to.
I think this one's. Close, but after the other, the meeting the other day, this is the closest it's.
Yeah, yeah.
To being done.
Yeah. Alright, um. I think that's it for that discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So, next up is, um, uh, so, uh, uh, item number five, I think we're. We're going to not take that up, right, correct?
Yeah.
Um.
Since we have the, um.
Yeah.
The owner of Lucky Green Ladies here, can we ask her if she wants to say anything yet, or?
Um, well, um, Alyssa reached out to me earlier today, um, and I just mentioned tonight that we were just going to have more business tonight. Um, but that if we decided to have her come speak at a future meeting, we would, we'd be happy to do that, but, um.
What I'm just seeing is how it's on the agenda, I would, I'd like to hear from her. Or Nick, or or her attorney.
People need to be careful that we're not talking about, yeah, the negotiations, right, so what would be the scope of that conversation?
I I would like to see if they have anything to say. I think they're here.
Okay, but, okay, we're, we're trying to stick to the procedure, right, so the procedure is, is that, um. And I'm not, I'm not sure what you're pointing at.
Specifically to the item number five, specifically.
Not ready to vote today, though, so it's.
Which is why it says discussion and or vote. There will be a discussion. So, and and they're here.
Okay, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say anything about who I need, who I need to allow to speak at the meeting. So, and I've made, I've made the decision to to that we're not gonna, we're gonna take care of.
We're not gonna hear from them tonight, okay.
We're not gonna hear from them tonight, that's correct.
Sure.
Yeah.
Meeting in the future.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah. Okay. Um, and and I just wanna say that I was clear about that with Lucky Green Ladies earlier today. Um, and. That email was clear.
Yeah, yeah, I'll say, I think she's been here all along, we don't wanna just discuss negotiation, um, topics in this, in this meeting.
Right, right, okay, um, so. Um. So, yeah.
You and Alec, they asked me to give an update on the policy. Someone that I think.
On the.
The, um, the policy and procedure that came from them, from state, June, for July.
Um, let's, let's hold off on that tonight, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, I'd like to get that listed as an agenda item.
Sure.
So that we're not doing anything outside of, oh, I'm out, okay, um. Okay, does anybody have any other business? Alright. Moving on, Mike, old business.
Alright, see if we can, uh, vote on some of the Tom Meeting articles.
I don't know.
Um, article number nine is to, uh, appropriate two thousand dollars on a free cash to purchase a defibrillator. Or an AED, but it ever let it apart, uh, they did have one there, and it, uh. Was not in good working condition this year, so they took the AED from the upstairs of the town hall down there. Uh, so we'd like to, uh, purchase, uh, an AED for their use. And that's article nine, and the recommendation is two thousand from free cash.
I think that's money well spent. Um, any questions?
Wouldn't you, a motion to endorse, or is it?
Um, I think we.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm motion to endorse, uh, article nine is written.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright. Roll call vote, Denise, Alec.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Is that fast enough for you?
That's good, article ten. Article ten is, um. I'll, I'll say what it is, and then I'll give you the explanation, it's to appropriate two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and one dollars from free cash. To going into, um, uh, for the use, um, for, uh, oh, um, nope. Um, for, um, education, care, um, prevention. Uh, to do with opioids, this is part of the settlement that in the end, we're gonna get like a million dollars, but we can only spend it. On those things as listed in in the, uh, settlement. So, um, it comes in as free cash. And this would just put it in an article, so we make sure that it's only used for those things. That are listed in the settlement.
And we vote on what it's used for.
Um, it would be, it, they're listed, so. Um, it would be, yeah, so like if, uh, the fire department buys knock-in, or if they have an education program that they wanted. Nope, wants to run at the schools, they'll be able to spend it out of that account.
And that's for overtime for whoever's doing it and everything else.
Um, if. If, if we hire, a lot of times, there's inspir- inspirational speakers that, uh, speak on addiction, they could hire someone like that to speak. Um, whatever they see is, if they have to help someone that needs help, uh. Finding a, a, a treatment facility, or transportation to a treatment facility, uh, things like that.
Is that, who is, who is known, is it? Fire chief?
Fire chief, police chief, health agent, school superintendent, um.
Somebody asked me the other day if there was anybody.
There should be a year. There always was a select board rep, so. They should, you should take that up in a future.
Yeah, I I thought, I thought we didn't, uh, have anybody on there, so I, I didn't know.
Nope, there should be. Um, and I, the state rep is, uh, part of it, and, um, uh, there's representative from, uh, the hospital. And, um, someone from the district attorney's office, it's a, it's a good group, uh. It's, uh, one, once a month, they meet, uh, once a quarter, I forget, but not that often, about an hour.
Alright, let's get that on the next agenda.
Okay.
We'll do it next time. Okay, that sounds important, alright, cool.
From our motion to endorse article ten is written.
Sorry. Alright, we have a motion and a second, Denise? Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I too am a yes.
Alright, the next one is to appropriate eighty five thousand from free cash. Um, for the can- cannabis community impact mitigation fund, so this is money. That was received from Kena, uh, from, as part of their, uh, mitigation. And, um, can only be used for expenses that we have related to that facility. Um, and, uh. Depending on what the buy-off thing is with the state, who knows, we may have to send it back. Yeah.
So, our, our motion to endorse, uh, article eleven is written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Denise? Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. By the way, all these roll call votes are because you're not here, Meg.
But thanks, Meg.
I realized that I just got home, and I was gonna change and come up if I.
You didn't stop at Alberta's for us?
Yeah.
Article thirteen, uh, so. Uh, if you remember in May, we, um. Adopted an article, Tom Meeting voted for it to file special legislation to be able to use the prudent investor strategy. Right when I got an email from the state senator's office saying they were about to have a hearing on the bill, the, uh, special legislation. The governor signed. Um, the budget, and in the budget, there's a statute. That if Tom Meeting votes to accept the statute, um, chapter two, two hundred and two oh three C. Um, the Massachusetts Prune Investment Investor Act, we can do it that way, so there's no need for the special legislation now, we just need town meeting approval. For, to adopt the act.
Okay. Any discussion?
Our motion to approve article twelve is written.
Thirteen. I skipped one, we'll go back to that.
Okay, sorry, uh, thirteen, second.
Alright, uh, we have a motion and a second, Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Megan, um, and I too am a yes.
And I did skip article twelve, article twelve is to appropriate ten thousand dollars out of free cash, and this is to hire. Uh, the actuarial that does our study on our OPEB. So our post deployment, we have to do this every two years.
Okay.
And, uh, so this is the year that we have to do it.
Okay, so now I'll motion to endorse article twelve is written.
Second. Okay, uh, uh, hearing a motion and a second, um, Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Article fourteen, uh, this was put forward by the town clerk, and this article would exempt, um. Residents over seventy and disabled residents, um, let me see. Um, if we accept that, the Mass General law, chapter one forty, one thirty nine C. It would exempt from licensing the service animals and dogs owned by a person age seventy or over. And, uh, FinCom recommended this.
Any discussion?
Um, so our motion to, um, endorse article fourteen is written.
Second.
Okay, Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I too am a yes.
Uh, the next two articles, article fifteen and article sixteen, um, this is, uh. You were presented with this before from the Norton Historical Society, and, uh, they did go out, uh, brought Kimball. Did go out and get, uh, estimates.
Right.
And, um, has made a recommendation, um, for, uh, someone to. Install the sewer, um, also to pay for parking lot, so the first article. Is, um, remove and replacement and expansion of the parking lot. The Nat- Natural Norton Historical Society on eighteen West Main Street, and this is the back. Uh, drive, you go down the back driveway, and it's concrete out front of the garage there, it's in that area right there. You voted to put the articles on, and and now, um. You're voting, uh, to recommend them, um, with the funding, um.
So that's, so our motion to endorse article fifteen is written.
Second.
Um, before we vote, Mike, did we, did FinCom look at this yet?
FinCom did, um, and they were one, wondering if you had voted on that, because there were your articles.
Yeah.
And then two, they just wanted it also to rent it by capital. I'm not using any capital funds, it's all coming out of free cash, but. They just might could get their endorsement too, so we'll get doing that on next Tuesday.
Okay, alright, we have a motion and a second, Denise? Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah, yes.
I'm a yes.
So you, you talked about article sixteen too, so.
Article sixteen is, um, uh, for the sewer, the sewer tie-in, and, uh. Also lucky for recommendations.
So I'm, I'm motion to endorse article sixteen is written.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, Denise? Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg? Meg is a yes, and I am also a yes. Thanks, is that for tonight? Well, yeah, just for that town meeting articles.
Capital meet, uh, FinCom meets Monday, capital meets Tuesday.
Excellent.
Point and note on that, municipal, so I said, the, uh, water sewer commission has waived.
Uh, I, I should, I should have mentioned that, yeah.
Or, yeah, tunnel.
So they waive all, right, okay.
Yeah, article twenty five, uh, the petitioner has asked that it be removed because the water and sewer is waving. Um, that was a petition article to have the fees waived for, uh, the tie-ins on, for the habitat. Uh, Water and Sewer Commission voted to waive, so the petitioner asked that the article be.
Okay, excellent. Um, alright, um, old business, uh, number two.
So, um, and number two is, um. One of the contracts you talked about tonight with that amendment.
Yep.
Um, if you wanna prove it with that amendment, and if the union agrees, then I'll have a sign. Copy, uh, a copy for you to sign at a later, later date.
Okay.
Alright, should, should we approve or? Bring it to them, or? What, what stream was it?
I can bring it back, no, I can bring it back, so I'll, I'll bring that to them and come back to you.
Okay, that's fine.
And, uh, the same with the other one.
Same with number three, okay.
So if, uh, did my ask, um. If, if they agreed everything, do we have to go back into exec to discuss it, or can we just bring it?
Okay.
No.
But I didn't wanna extend it any longer. Yeah, that's, that's what I wanna make sure of.
Alright, big subject here, uh, update on the select boards, uh, fiscal year twenty three town report photo.
I told you December before, I was wrong, you're late.
Oh, you are late, okay, yeah. Um, alright, so what do we need to do?
Um, so. Who usually writes up the report, the chair of the vice chair, I forget.
Not it.
It's definitely not the clerk. You break it up, yeah, yeah.
I'm willing to help.
I don't think there's a big rush on the photo, but, uh, uh, so.
And when is it due by? Like Monday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, it was due, uh.
Monday?
I forget now, Michelle told me, I said, when do you usually get that in?
Last Monday.
But it was, it was, it was a month, it was the end of August, I think.
End, end of August, okay. Alright, so I would assume that it's the chair's responsibility, so why don't I reach out to you and Michelle and. Get some guidance on it, and then maybe if you, if, if, uh, if I need some help writing some of this, you guys. Oh, you're the newbie, that means you have to, you have to write it.
But, yeah, lots of accomplishments.
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, um, sounds good, uh, town managers report.
So, uh, we finally have a, uh, a contact person, and it's been working out good, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And, um, so, um. You know, example, uh, they reached out to Beth Rossi one day and said they needed, uh, some people transported somewhere, and so, uh. And so, uh, Chrisana took the van and drove, uh, them where they had to go. And, uh, they did reach out today, um, that there's some supplies they need, but they're. Down in Fall River, I know Bedford, and they need someone to go get them, so someone's gonna go get those for them. Um, and we are without liaison, uh, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting next week, so.
Okay.
Um, some po- good progress, and, um, I know I was asked by a resident about vaccination status and. They are working on, uh, that with with everyone that's there, the state is handling that. Um, so they are, uh.
Yeah, they have a date, they have a date set up and everything for vaccinations, which is great.
Yeah.
Um, Mike, if you could also, uh, please, please, I have a getting a list of things that people could possibly donate.
Right, that's what, yeah.
And other towns have donation lists, so something similar, like what their needs.
Yeah, next week when we're, uh, on with them, we'll talk about, you know, hopefully we can get sizes. Uh, for clothes and things like that, and, um. You know, when I talk to the group again, we may be looking for volunteers that can just go pick supplies up when needed or something like that.
Just real quick, I wanna thank everybody that's working on that, um, in best, and everybody who's been involved. So that's, uh, that's been great, um, I wanna thank Mike, but I also wanna thank Alec, who jumped on this right away. Um, and has had our attention on it from the beginning, so I just, um, I just really. Right now feel very proud of the way that the town is responding to it, um, and so, um. You know, hopefully we can, we can, uh, keep, keep it going, so anyway. Good, Mike.
Um, just on that, we had our kickoff meeting last week on our hazard mitigation plan development, so, uh. The fire chief, who was our emergency management director, did, uh, work to get a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars. That we've hired a consultant to work with us on developing the plan, um, so, um. He is, uh, has a committee established with myself, um, him, the fire chief, our emergency management, uh. Police, someone from the police department, the health agent, the building commissioner, the highway superintendent. Water sewer, council on aging, conservation, Wheaton College, and the planning department. And so, we're working with a consultant to, um, identify areas in town. Um, that could be subject to hazards during storm events, culverts, dams. Um, things like that, and, uh, we'll develop the plan, it should be done by May. And then this will help us when we're seeking grant money. The, the plan will be approved by the state emergency management agency and also FEMA. And, uh, so it'll help us when we're seeking grant money for the removal of dam, replacement of culvert. The one of the things they wanna see is, do you have a hazard mitigation plan, or is this identified as a mitigation plan, and then we can start. You know, attacking some of those things.
So we already know the hazards and where they are.
Mm-hmm.
At least everyone that's been in town for, we already know, it just, it just sets up, uh, the town being, being able to request.
Yeah.
Um, just an update on one twenty-three, as you've probably seen, they're raising the structures, we sent out an alert, two people that get alerts. Um, so, next, hopefully the weather holds out, uh, next Thursday at four o'clock, they're gonna start with the street sweeper. Um, going from four ninety-five down to just before Carpenter Street. And so they'll be sweeping the road then, and then they'll start paving at six P M. And they'll be paving all. Yeah, and they'll be paving all through the night, so. Everyone should be aware that's six P M Thursday. Through the night, avoid that intersection, uh, South Washington, North Washington, and one twenty-three.
Okay.
What is the, uh, when they, when they, the, the, that, that intersection, the lights flashing, what is it, a twenty-eight day?
Um.
Get used to.
They, they expect it by the end of October, the lights will be operating.
I know there's a, there's a count.
Yeah.
They know.
Yeah, they, cause they did that at, they did that at Lincoln Street too, they had that.
Yeah.
Just so people get.
It's a certain number, number of days that they have to be doing a lot of customs in the new writing.
Right, yeah.
So, uh, the state, the state is opposed to, um, shutting roads down, so they won't shut the road down, they'll be doing one. One lane at a time, um, and I asked them to, uh, notify everyone in that area. Um, businesses and homeowners that. The road's gonna be more or less shut, it's gonna be open, but only one lane, so.
They, they can't be shut down for, I mean, the emergency vehicles, if they have to get through, you know, when they shut down one twenty-three, when they were straightened out of that.
And.
That was, the dynamics of that were interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
And just one other thing, and, uh, I'll ha- I just thought of it now, I'll have to remind, uh, the food pantry, uh, starting next Monday. The back parking lot of the town hall isn't gonna be available, and they're gonna fence it right off. Uh, because they're doing, uh, sewer connections and some other utility work. Um, and then they're gonna pave it before Thanksgiving, we'll get the parking lot back again, but we're gonna lose it for a while. Um, so.
So how long would that remain?
Yeah, with that drive.
What's it? How they get in that?
Um, that's, everyone, the side parking lot will be open.
They just won't be able to go.
They won't be able to go around the back of the building.
Okay.
When is that?
But it's.
Roger, twenty-first?
The twenty-first, yeah.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, alright, thanks Meg, um. Select board report and mail, anybody have anything?
Uh, I, real quick, you guys are all gonna hate my guts for this, but I'm bringing it back, uh, office hours, I meant to.
Oh.
Say this last meeting, but I'm gonna do office hours on October twelfth, uh, from five to seven. So I, I'll put it out there as well, I just, uh.
Say it again, say it again, so everybody can hear.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have office hours at town hall between five and seven P M on October twelfth, Thursday.
Just so I can rotate, like, how often do you do it?
We, we didn't put like a, like a real specific plan in place, we, we originally were going to just. Rotate it through, I think, and then I think we had a conversation, we just said, well, just do it whenever you can, coordinate schedules and all that.
Okay.
So, but Thursday night's best, cause that's when town hall's open late, so somebody will be there. Um, and, um, yeah, if you wanna do them, you know, just, we usually just announce them at the, at the select board meeting. Um, like Steve just did, and just like say, like, hey, I'm picking a date, and like, don't anybody else pick this date.
Right.
Yeah, I'm actually meant to tell you guys that beforehand, in case you were.
We just, we haven't done it a while, we did it.
Yeah, we did it, we did it for a while, but we, yeah, we never really, we just coordinated, oh, hey, I'm gonna do it this week, and.
Right.
You know, we'll do it next week, but depending on our schedule.
And the attendance was kinda so-so, like I'd rather have more people come, to be honest, you know what I mean, but we, we did have some, some folks come in, so.
Okay.
Um, get to meet some people and.
Did you try different times of the day, daytime versus evening?
We all did, I think, like five to seven, right? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, five to seven, I could do a daytime change, well, yeah, that actually would be easier, it has to be.
Like a different crowd, right?
Um, I don't think so, yeah, I don't think so, you wanna do it somewhere else.
Why, you're gonna buy everyone like coffee at Dunkin' Donuts or something else?
It's more comfortable.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you touch?
Oh, no, come on, my select board room is amazing.
You're right.
Yeah.
Is the best building.
Yeah, that's great on that. Alright, um. Yeah. Um, alright, cool, that's great, Steve, thanks for bringing that back up, that's, that's great, alright, Lawrence?
Uh, I think Lawrence has written.
Second.
Okay.
Hey, that's fine.
Alright, we do have, so we had a very packed agenda tonight, um, I appreciate everybody getting, getting through it. Um, and, and, um, um, uh, part of the reason it wasn't more packed is cause I pushed some things off. To next week, so we are gonna meet next week on Thursday, I don't think, I hopefully it won't be a, a big agenda, but it was just some things that. I didn't wanna have a million things on tonight's agenda, um, and then our next meeting was, our next meeting will be the fifth. Then we're gonna have another meeting on the nineteenth. Um, so two weeks after that, that's two days, uh, four days before, um, town, town meeting.
Yeah.
So we should be able to hopefully wrap up any town meeting stuff for that.
And did you see my email late today? Uh, the treasurer collector needs you to have, it can just be a quick Zoom meeting.
Okay.
To, to vote to, uh, approve the borrowing that we, we just had our standing in force call yesterday. Um, so, she needs you on, uh, Thursday, October twelfth, or Friday, the thirteenth.
Okay, George Steve's office hours?
Can we do it at the next meeting? That's what I was gonna ask.
No, because they won't be going out to do the borrowing till after that.
Yeah.
So.
And then the nineteenth is too late?
Yeah.
Of course. Alright.
So the fourth is to, or, uh, the.
So it needs to be the third, the twelfth or the thirteenth.
Right, um. And to Zoom, and just the one item on the agenda.
I mean, we only need three of us.
Right, right.
So.
So I'm, I'm around, so.
Yeah.
If we can do it during the day, I'm, I'm hoping all day.
Okay, well, we all coordinate schedules and then we'll figure out, we'll get it on.
Yeah, so we do it, I mean, well, yeah, you're, you're scared, I'm more flexible than.
Can we do it at Dunkin' Donuts, is that where? Yeah, um, yeah, talk about, we'll talk about it, we'll, we'll get, we'll get it done, okay, great. Alright, um, I'll take a motion to return.
Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote. Last one of the night, Denise?
Yeah.
Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes, hi.
Uh, thank you for participating remotely, and, um, uh, and I am also a yes, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.